Okay, it's officially six o'clock. Time for the special meeting of the Board of Trustees, October 21st, 2025, for the public hearing on KCZZ 05-6. Roll call, please.
Ms. Horrich.
Here.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we sit down for our moment of meditation, let us keep in our hearts and prayers those who are battling breast cancer for their strength, healing, and continued recovery. And to those who have lost their lives to this disease, we honor their memory with love and respect, as special prayer goes out to their families and loved ones. Thank you.
I will motion to continue the public hearing for a major modification of final development plan at 10345 Corrine Avenue, CZC-05-6, Cly Motors.
I'll second.
Ms. Horrich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Okay, we have heard a significant number of residents and the applicants during the public comment portion of the public hearing last week. As noted, at the end of our meeting last week, we had conditions that were discussed, written down, and tonight, the Board of Trustees will be reviewing these conditions, deliberating on them, and voting to approve or deny the major modification to the final development plan. We will not reopen the public comment portion of the public hearing, and said I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing so that the Board of Trustees can deliberate and vote.
A motion to close the special meeting of the Board of Trustees, public hearing case, now, let's retract that, a motion to close the public hearing, case CZC-05-6, Cly Motors, 10345 Corrine Avenue, final, major modification of final development plan.
I'll second.
Ms. Horrich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
For the first item of new business will be presented by David Miller from the Development Department. I will just bear in mind for those watching or viewing that page 15 of the agenda packet contains the conditions of approval that were aforementioned in the earlier motions.
Mr. Weckback, I've had a couple people say to me that watch this to move your microphone closer.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Board. Since our last meeting, we've had, I think, some substantive conversations. We were able to take numerous comments that were heard from the audience. And we had two rounds of testimony, I think, with residents and with the applicant. I know that we spent considerable amount of time with Mr. Waller walking through each of the items, and I think we were able to pull together and condense those down into what we believe were the major issues that needed to be addressed. And so I just wanted to kind of walk through those real quick. So what we condensed here was whether the mound that's been in question was properly built, and whether there was anything left in the mound that shouldn't be there. And so we have had information from the county agency that said that those reports and those inspections were done on a regular basis. We have provided to the board the documentation that was provided by the applicant, their weekly construction report that showed all of the trees being either ground up or hauled off, as well as the material from the basement of the buildings that were demolished, all of the equipment that was used for that. So we feel good about that based on that information that was provided. Additionally, the county has said, this is the Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District has said today that the geotech engineering reports will not be signed by the engineer until the final inspection is requested by the applicant. So, once they're ready to get their final certificate of occupancy, they will call the county agency, and then they will come out. The engineer will assess the project and the site, and that's when that information will be signed off on by the engineer.
So if I have a question, do you want me to go?
Sure, go ahead.
So, the geotech engineer from the county, he has a way to look inside the mass, or determine mathematically, I guess, engineering-wise?
I don't know how they do it. That's their work, it's not under the purview of the township. So their geotech engineer will be able to assess, maybe they do cores. But they will be the one that signs off and says it's properly constructed. So, that's between the builder, the developer, and the agency from which they're seeking their application.
Let's say the contractor went rogue and did something that Wawa didn't know anything about, then that certificate occupancy is then held up until it's remediated?
Yeah, I would presume so. And again, that would then be an issue between the developer and their contractor.
Sure, okay.
Right, so that would have to be determined at that point. There were a couple of items that were related to the resident who is on the furthest west end of the project. And so there were some stormwater runoff that apparently had uncovered some roots on trees on the property. And so arrangements been made between the developer and the homeowner to have that remediated. And so that discussion's been had, and that is planned. The other is the storm drain that is on the same property, and that conversation has also been had and is planned as well. So again, this is a conversation between a developer and a private party. So it's not something that we can insert ourselves into and tell the developer, you have to do something on somebody else's private property. So we have regulatory authority over the property that we are regulating.
Again, sorry to interrupt. So that's the property here, Shorty, right?
Correct.
Is Ms. Meyer, is that Karen? What's Karen's last name? I'm sorry, Jill.
Kiger.
Okay.
Kiger's next door.
Because that had an issue too, is that?
It's my understanding that the drain is in between their two homes.
Gotcha. Because she had some flooding that I think has already been compensated long ago.
Correct. That's all been cleaned up already, and she was compensated previously by the developer. All right. We have provided in your packet the flow of the water on the site, and so I think you can see the final grading plan that is going to be able to provide you sense of how they are managing the stormwater runoff. If you'll note, Mr. Waller, I can see you looking, and I provided you a copy of blown-up copy of one of the properties. So Mr. Schneble has been concerned about the amount of water that's going to be needed for the vegetation on his property. And so what the developer has done in the plans before you is they have submitted plans to regrade the property, I think it's, is that BB? Not that one. It's labeled with his address up on top.
DD.
Uh, DD?
Dog, dog.
Yes. So, there is an additional grading and providing additional 10-foot slope and a fall-off of water towards his property. So it's highlighted and written in. So, that's a concession that the developer has made in this proposal for you to approve.
So that, I'm trying to understand, because the swale is in the middle, so you have the drop-off?
That is correct. So the swale is above the 10-foot fall-off so as to not catch the water.
Gotcha. And then that thing called gravity, that'll go down in Mr. Schneble's yard?
That is correct, yes. So, his trees will get the water.
As it falls from the sky.
That is correct.
Right.
Off of the wall.
Not mechanical sprinkler water, but just water as it rains?
That's right.
Okay, so there's no mechanical sprinkler in that?
Not in that. Other question that was brought up were the lights on the parking lot. Although these are LED lights, they are designed to have their own cutoff at a particular line. That's the way that they're designed these days. There was still a request that shields be placed on those lights, and I spoke to the developer, and those have all been installed. So there's seven lights that surround the southern perimeter of the development that abuts any residential property. All of those have been installed. So it's a black shield, I gave you a copy on your desk there of the manufacturer's product design, and it shows the shield that goes underneath the light. And it has a shield that keeps the light from going behind, shining behind.
But it doesn't detract from light in the lot itself for the safety of, okay.
That's right. So it's going to shine down and out, but it can't shine back because it has that shield there.
I don't know if you even know the answer to this, it's probably unfair to ask. Do we know anywhere else that's used these lights?
I do not. I'm going to presume that it's a common product that's used today because they're more energy-efficient, and you have a greater control over those. And again, when you look at those, they're all LED, so you can very distinctly point the direction of those lighting.
And this says, in the description, lower power density, greater pole spacing, so I presume that since they're putting those on, that's going to keep everything well-lit on their property?
Correct.
Okay.
That is the point of that lighting. Couple other items that were brought up for discussion. There was a question over four-foot versus five-foot retaining wall. So if you're standing on the parking lot, and looking towards Rayanne, your western portion's on your right, the eastern portion is on your left, there is a significant fall-off as it continues, that grade just goes towards US 27. And so it gets to a point where you're several parcels east from 27, and that's where they are proposing to install, do a lot of grading there, they're going to install a retaining wall, and then they're going to backfill that with dirt and elevate that. So I've given you a larger blow-up there so you can see how that retaining wall is going to be constructed. I think notably, the previous proposal for a 12-foot fence was at the property line. And so the redesign moves the fence above the retaining wall and up the hill. And so with the request to move from a 12-foot fence to an eight-foot fence, the new fence is actually over a foot higher than what the original proposal was. So you can see how that is going to be.
Combined height of the fence on top of the wall, so it's a minimum 12 feet.
Correct. And I'll read that for you in a second.
So the purpose of the retaining wall was part of this shielding, right?
It really is more of the grading and to help cut a new swale behind on that end of the property to direct the water and control the water away from the properties that were on that end of the property as it slopes down. And so that was part of the goal, and to build that up in the back there because there was such a significant fall-off.
So when I went to the original, it said four to five feet. But this, I guess, based on the comments last week, it was suggested that this was part of the buffer. It's really irrelevant, four or five feet, because you've got the 12-foot fence. And the 12-foot fences, what concerned people was eight-foot or nine in some places and 10 in the other, and this is going to remain, on any property, it will be 12 feet. Is that the case?
That is correct. I'll read that condition here in a moment. But, yes, the original plan that was, so we spent two hours in the basement, here in the conference room, with residents. And we spent an hour talking about concerns, and then we spent an hour walking through requests. And then after the developers went back to the drawing board, they came with another proposal. They brought that, we spent another hour, hour and a half, at the store on-site and walked through those again. Here's what we're proposing. On that original piece that was distributed to the residents, here's what we're proposing. As you mentioned, Mr. Waller, it said plus or minus five-foot retaining wall. So what they've presented here is a four-foot retaining wall. So it's not like it's been changed, it's that the plan says it's going to be four feet, and it's all, and I'll talk about the grade here in a moment. The water, here's another question that has come up, is where's that water going to go? Once it comes, this is on the southeastern most, the southeastern most portion of the property, where's that water going to end up? And the county has said, where the water has been flowing, the developer can allow it to continue to flow. So, it's going to settle in to some degree in that swale that's going to be on top of the retaining wall. It's going to dissipate in that over about a 24-hour period. If there is some stormwater runoff, it is allowed to run south through the properties between the Cly property and the Matson property, under Rayanne, as it goes and follows the natural flow of where watershed currently is. So, the original plan had an inlet and a drain for it, and so because of the topography, they weren't able to install that. And so the plan now is to just let it continue its current path. All right? So, I want to just, I don't know if there's anything I haven't covered, Mr. Weckback, that you thought, anything? Mr. Waller, you're the one that had the list of questions.
Yeah, I have a couple follow-ups. So the back of the sign?
That's, yes.
Okay, that was, yep. That was actually on one of the conditions.
Right.
So the...
Wall sign above the rear entry.
The wall sign on the back. The building has been designed to manage most of the customers coming in the front. They're buying gas, they're walking in the front, buying whatever else they want, paying. Then there actually is a back door that is targeted for customers who aren't buying fuel. And they're more interested in just the food, and this allows them an option of not having to manage all the other customer traffic, and they come right in the back. So, the question was raised that the sign on the back would be lit at night. And so we added that in as one of the conditions. The developer checked with their engineers, and they said we can manage to turn that off at night.
From 10:30 PM to 5:30 AM, is stated, okay.
Yes.
Another issue that came up over and over again were the size of the trees and whether they were pine needle or...
Right, and that, so what you have in front of you as well, I have a blown-up picture of the landscaping plan and the types of trees. I think the one that I'd point out were the green giants or the arborvitae's. I think there's 79 that they're planting on the property, not only along that southern perimeter of the property, on the south side of the fence, but along the front as well. So that's a complete, it has the number per each item, plus the size of each plant and the trunks of the trees. I know that was called out, a question that wasn't in there, but it is.
This is a significant increase from the original plans of the number.
It's huge. When you think about, and when you look at the landscaping plan on that western side of the property, not only did they add the arborvitae's, they have added in three more trees in between all of those. So, it's going to be a significant buffer. The residents requested no fence, and so what they're getting is trees instead.
Three in between each arborvitae?
Yes.
Another thing that was on the list is dirt and roots for the Shorty property? I think that's something that Wawa...
Yeah, I started with that one where the developer and the homeowner have had a discussion yesterday or today, and the homeowner is going to have that work done and be reimbursed.
All right, a couple things that I probably thought were not going to get done and may not, locking the back doors because you've already explained that it's kind of a separate part of it. Delivery hours, I don't even know if we can restrict those, but we certainly don't on any other business.
I think the deliveries are all on the north side of the building away from...
Yeah. The north and west side of the building, and the building is turned away from. There will be some, somebody apparently is going to be able to hear a truck. But I think they have committed to making the request when it's possible.
And you talked about...
With the number of stores in the region, it's assumed that those trucks are delivering to all the stores, and, you know, it's hope that that can be done.
And you talked about cleaning the drain in between the Kiger and Shorty property.
Yep.
I think the lighting of the hood, the...
The canopy?
Canopy, yeah.
Yeah. It's on the north side of the building.
Okay.
Granted, there may be a house or two on the furthest east end of Rayanne that could see that, but again, it's presumed that with the hill and the fence, it's going to be shielded to some degree, but it's not going to be midnight dark when you look out your back because it's a commercial district.
And that is regulated by our zoning, the lighting?
The lighting is part of the lighting plan that was submitted, and that's part of the approval plan. It was included in everything that you've already seen, which again, generally, you know, shows the foot candles of the lighting under the canopy at the property lines, all that.
And I had, I think, just two more. I think that Wawa answered this last time, who to contact is obviously going to be, there's a hierarchy of who to contact, from store manager to regional to district or whatever nomenclature they use. And enforcing is a little bit of a trickier thing because certain things, soil and water, we don't have engineers on staff to do that, nor do I want them to do that because they're not qualified. On those issues, the enforcement mechanism, I would assume, would be through the county. On things like zoning, that we just spoke about, the lights and the shields and things like that, whether the six-foot, eight-foot trees show up and are two-foot, that's something that we can control. So it's, you know, if there's an EPA problem, then the state would address it. So it's varied based upon our form of federalist government. Is that correct?
Hamilton County has a webpage that you can go on to, and you can file your request with them to come and inspect, to investigate a problem. So that's very easy for a county agency that has that kind of regulatory authority and responsibility. Whereas other issues on-site, then there's a general manager always on-site, they always have a minimum of three employees, and that would be the person that they can contact if there is an issue that they feel like the management needs to address.
And I would suggest that if they don't get the quick response or response that they feel is adequate from the county to then reach out to the township, then we can contact the county on their behalf.
Right.
And that's done on a myriad of things already. I think I had...
One other thing, the sod.
Yes.
Sod shall be planted on the south side of the berm to help eliminate the potential for runoff.
If I might, let me just read through the conditions. So, this is a common language of our resolutions for development projects. And so what is not common are conditions. So not all development projects end up with additional requests on the developer. So what we've done is tried to coalesce around the major issues where we feel like we have the opportunity to make a request of the developer, and these are the items, if you approve this resolution and the major modification to their FDP, then these conditions are recommended to be a part of it. So, number one, the height of the, better make sure I can read it good. "The height of the earthen mound shall be reduced by 10 feet from the elevation previously approved by Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District, ensuring that the final grade and slope remain consistent with all applicable county engineering and stormwater requirements." Number two, "The developer shall establish and maintain a vegetation buffer along the property line adjacent to the mound, as depicted on the submitted site and landscape plans. This buffer located on the south side of the fence shall include a combination of trees, shrubs, and ground cover plantings designed to improve aesthetic quality and enhance screening." Number three, "The developer should not be required to implement any condition or directive that would result in non-compliance with the requirements or prohibitions of another reviewing agency, including but not limited to Hamilton County Department of Public Works, Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District, or Ohio EPA." Number four, okay, this is something I think you've asked about, and this is the height of the fence, very specific here. "12 feet of screening shall be provided using a combination of eight-foot privacy fence, earthworks, and retaining walls. The top of the fence remains no less than 12 feet above the average adjacent grade." And so that was in your packet, we've had an edit since then, it's just a recommendation, above, no less than 12 feet above the average adjacent grade of the building on the property. So that's number four. Number five, "The television monitors remain operational between 12 AM and 6 AM for payment processing and safety purposes. However, the monitors shall be programmed to mute during this period, disabling the audio output." Number six, "The wall sign above the rear entry shall be turned off between 10:30 PM and 5:30 AM." Number seven, "Within the constraints presented by the topography, best effort shall be made to install fencing flush with the ground to eliminate any underneath gaps." Number eight, "Trees that are being installed for screening purposes shall be installed per the attached landscape plan with the arborvitae variety having an average height of six feet tall at installation." And then, number nine, "Sod shall be planted along the south side of the berm to help eliminate the potential for runoff." So those are the conditions that we feel are, provide a reasonable expectation to minimize any conflict with the neighboring properties.
Mr. Miller, in this packet that you provided, about the fourth page from the end, I think it's the fourth, maybe it's the fifth, the fifth. There's a letter there from Hamilton County Conservation District, what is that?
That's the permit that was given to the applicant when they requested the earthwork permit to do all their dirt work.
From, who's that from? That's Hamilton County, okay.
David, on the, going back to item five, "The television monitors remain optional but will be programmed to mute," does that match our noise ordinance? Or, I don't know how much noise those make.
I believe our noise ordinance is 11 to 7?
That is correct, our noise ordinance is 11 to 7.
So should this match that? Or, I don't know how loud those things are.
At the discretion of the board, I mean, if you all wanted to change that condition to be 11 to 7, you can make that as part of your motion.
And it's currently listed as?
12 to 6.
Midnight to 6 AM.
It's hard to kind of tell because different monitors have... It's, it's hard to kind of tell because different monitors have different volumes. Some of them just blast out.
I've been told it's, it's actually difficult to even hear the monitors if you're standing at the front door of the building.
So, so the way the noise resolution is written is, and this is the standard to keep in mind, the noise has to be plainly audible from beyond the property line. So that's sort of the litmus test that you would be putting yourself through on this.
So plainly audible, this is a real nitpicky question. Plainly, I, I hear noise or I can hear what's actually being said?
Plainly audible is how it is written in our resolution.
So, if it doesn't, if it, it remains at the 12, 12 to.
12 to 6.
12 to 6 and it's violates noise ordinance, then.
And there would potentially be some issues, yes.
Either way, it's fine with me.
She has changed it tonight.
So if the board wants to make that as part of their motion, when they, when they make that motion, have that change stated.
I know a number of hours went into this and I don't want to step in without talking to the other parties involved. Is this, is this a deal breaker with the change? Okay. Then I'll, I'll motion that we change that from 12 to 6 to 11 to 7 to match our noise ordinance.
And I'll second it.
I, I believe you have to have a motion to pass or deny the resolution in front of you and then can amend it.
Well, let me ask this. So whatever we do here, this still has to go down to Hamilton County to have them approve any earthwork changes because we're not that.
That is correct.
We're not the earthwork. So what Wawa's asking is for us to allow them to go, what turned out to be the bigger issue in this is all the dirt.
Yeah.
So I'll ask our legal counsel, now I thought the appropriate motion would be to amend it and then to vote on the amended. Is it?
So if you choose to approve the modification, you'd be approving the resolution subject to whatever modified conditions.
Okay. So do we need to vote on the modified condition?
It, it'll be documented in the record. So your motion could be as simple as approving the resolution subject to the modifications we've discussed to conditions number five, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay.
And so they would take this, however this goes, and if they take it down to the county and they don't approve it, then would it come back to us or they would just still have to negotiate with the county to get it? And what if they throw out the lowering, what if the county says no, for whatever reason, we're not going to let you lower it, then what happens?
We would have a, an FDP in front of us that we've approved. And so then the, the dirt and earthwork, their application goes to the county just as it did before. And so they would be negotiating with them.
And this is just the highest part of the mound, which is behind the store?
To, to the west, yes, behind and to the west.
Additional.
No, I'm good.
I don't know if we want to call, call a vote.
Well, to be clear on the fence, it will be 12 feet high. The top of the fence will be 12 feet higher than adjacent grade and it'll be some combination of retaining wall and top of fence. Because the grade is not flat like the floor of this room, the grade is undulating.
That is correct.
And, and the fence will also try to hug the topography as much as possible with the concern of trash and things like that. So I, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we took the time last week because I think a lot of these issues we've now memorialized. We have them, we, we, we know where it's going with it. It doesn't mean that necessarily everybody's happy. I'm sure Wawa isn't happy they had to come back and, and the residents, many of whom don't want it there at all. But there is such a thing as property rights on both sides of the, of the discussion.
So, so I do have a question. I do, I do have a question. So what would be the timeline if, if whatever we do with this, to take it down to the county? Is it a week, a month, or do they have an agenda that you have to get on or?
I'm not aware of what their calendar is and how long it takes. The applicant might have already experienced something that could be repeated, but.
And we had, we had substantial.
I'm sorry, there's, there's folks in the audience that are out of order. This is a discussion now. I think we've had, I think that we've had hours and hours of speaking. I'm, I'm going to appeal to the chair to please bring, bring the, the crowd to order.
Can you enlighten the crowd what we discussed about?
Yeah, sure. So the public has gotten all due process to which they're entitled at the prior meeting. There were hours of testimony that everybody took and plenty of meetings after that. Effectively at the meeting, when it was continued last time, public comment was closed. So the only thing that was really continued were the trustees' deliberations over these conditions. And what they wanted was for the conditions to be memorialized in writing so they could really speak through it and deliberate in public transparently. But there won't be any additional public comment because all of that was already taken at the prior meeting.
They're changing it. They're changing it. I believe you have to reopen the public comment because it's been changed.
I, I, with all due respect, it's been absolutely fair. We've had hours and hours. I spent, I, every, every single concern is written down. And the reason I memorialize that is because it seemed to me that both sides had moving goalposts. And to my satisfaction, I see that, that, that the vast majority of, of significant issues have been addressed with this. There are things like deliveries or just, we don't hold anyone accountable for delivery times in, in the township. So again, you're out of order. I, I can appeal to the chair.
Please, please.
There's only been a motion, there hasn't been a second.
Okay, I'll second.
So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and go to a vote. I'll call to a vote then.
Ms. Orich?
The motion is to approve it, Matt?
Motion to approve.
With the change to the condition on.
Yeah.
Time from 11 to 7.
Right. Motion to approve with the stipulations changed with the time.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
See no other business yet? Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 6:37.